All right, I move that the board reconvened to an open meeting. Can one of my colleagues please help us certify the closed meeting?
Okay, whereas Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom Information Act and whereas Section 22.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you very much, madam. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
And Ms. Ward?
All right, thank you very much. Next, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance if you would join us, please. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item is the adoption of the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So, second.
All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And are there any opposed? All right, we have an agenda for this evening. Ms. Goodell, I do not have any speaker slips before me tonight. Do you have any speaker slips? No. And are there any letters or emails or other communications to be read into the record? All right, very good. Next is Item 5, Recognizations and Reports. Tonight, some support staff recognitions from the Falls City Education Association. Tony, do you want to invite in Amanda Ford? All right, Amanda Blanchard.
It's green. Hopefully you can hear me. I will do my best to project here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I bring you greetings and information from the Falls Church City Education Association. NEA's American Education Week began yesterday and runs through this Friday, November 21st, 2014. This is a week, this week is a great opportunity to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who make a difference in ensuring that every child has a quality education. The week-long celebration features a special observance each day of the week, today happens to be Parents' Day, and tomorrow, Wednesday, the November 19th, recognizes education support professionals. In an effort to recognize the wonderful FCCPS support professionals, the FCCEA organized its second annual letter-writing campaign. As of today, Mrs. Goodell had received 75 notes to share with the board, so when you click on that section of the agenda, it's massive, and hopefully you will take some time to look at those lovely letters and notes and cards that were written for our support staff. These letters and cards have been given to our ESPs to show our support for our amazing efforts every day. Each bus driver, paraprofessional, custodian, secretary, chef, and specialist is an integral part of the FCCPS family. They ensure that our students are healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged each and every day at school. We extend a huge thank you to these amazing men and women. We could not do what we do every day without them. Additionally, as we grow closer to the budget season, please remember that these individuals are important and deserve equal consideration when compensation and benefits are discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, we have approved the Consent Agenda for the public's knowledge that agenda has on its personal items, assignments for EPD, and advisory committee appointments, among other things. Moving on to Business Action Information, the first item is the Approval of the Proclamation for Computer Science Education Week. And I'm going to invite Mary Beth Connolly to come forward.
Hello, I'm Mary Beth Connolly. But I'm actually going to invite representatives from the Falls Church American Association of University Women who brought this Computer Science Education Week proclamation to our attention, so come on up, as well as two of our computer science teachers from Thomas Jefferson Elementary, Laura Dixon and Rob Carey.
You waiting for me to read the proclamation?
Yes, you have.
Thank you, sorry. I thought maybe they were going to make a few comments to start. However, I was wrong. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas, many science and engineering occupations are predicted to grow faster than the average rate for all occupations, and some of the largest increases will be in engineering and computer-related fields. And whereas, despite the expected job growth, the supply of new workers in these fields is struggling to keep up with demand, and women remain severely underrepresented. Whereas, although women fill close to half of all jobs in the US economy, they hold less than 25% of science, technology, engineering, and math jobs, those are STEM jobs. Whereas, if women and members of other underrepresented groups join the STEM workforce in proportion to their representation in the overall labor force, the STEM worker shortage would disappear. And whereas, according to Why So Few?, a 2010 research report by the American Association of University Women, negative stereotypes and gender bias in the school climate are barriers that continue to block women's progress in STEM. Whereas, in a world increasingly dependent on technology, computer science is crucial for every student. Whereas, Computer Science Education Week is observed each year in December in recognition of Rear Admiral Grace Murray Hopper's birthday. And whereas, Hopper received the AAUW Achievement Award in 1983 for her critical contributions to computer science, including co-inventing the computer language COBOL, no small feat. And whereas, the goal of Computer Science Education Week is to call attention to the need to improve and strengthen computer science education. And whereas, in honor of Computer Science Education Week 2013, held December, oh, I should probably say 2014, held December 8th through 14th, members of the AAUW and other advocates will be hosting Hour of Code sessions with students nationwide. Now therefore, the Falls Church City Public School Board does hereby proclaim December 8th through 14th, 2014, Computer Science Education Week. The Falls Church City Public School commends the AAUW for its leadership on science, technology, engineering, and math education, and urges the citizens of Falls Church City to recognize the need for K-12 computer science education and school climates that nurture girls' participation in STEM activities. I'm going to ask the rest of the board if they have questions or comments about this, and then we will take a vote to proclaim this week, and I'll sign it. So, does anyone on the dais have anything they'd like to comment about this? Mr. Sharp?
I had the pleasure of conversation with the superintendent and our vice chair, Justin Castillo, about 10 days ago with a fellow who had been the STEM education leader for Northrop Grumman, a fellow named Ed Swallow. And he's been engaged in a network of defense industry organizations encouraging people of color and females to be more highly represented in the STEM fields, working on trying to develop a system of mentors where the mentors would come from the defense industry companies and match up with students in middle school and high school, encouraging them to come along in the professions that the defense industry supports. And I was very encouraged by his commitment to that, and I look forward to some additional work with that. I hope that perhaps some of you may be interested in following up, but be happy to talk to you if so.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Just one quick comment. Last year was the first year of TSA at MEH. My son was in sixth grade, and he wanted to join. And one thing that really hit me was, I was frankly worried that it was going to be all a bunch of, you know, geeky boys wanting to do the same thing. And there was a very good number of girls who wanted to participate. This year's the second year in seventh grade. They had a huge number who applied. So, you know, it's good that we're doing this, and we're recognizing that there are, you know, deficits, and I think we should also recognize that, I think, here in Falls Church, we're, you know, we're doing our part to make sure that the deficit doesn't necessarily come from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on this end have a comment or a question? No? No? Yes, Mr. Castillo?
Well, I would just say there's some anecdotal evidence coming from George Mason that suggests that there's a really good cadre of girls going through some of the coding classes, so I hope that that's a foundation that'll be enduring and that we'll continue to see progress in this area. So, keep up the good work.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank our local members of the AAUW for bringing this to the attention of the school board. We so appreciate it, and to Mary Beth Connolly for facilitating that for us. For me personally, I've been in the computer field for my entire career, and I would say there are not many more women in it now than when I started decades ago. And it hurts because I love that profession. I'd also say that I spent four years on the board of a foundation here in Northern Virginia, the Women in Technology Education Foundation, where our goal is to connect girls to STEM. And we have mentoring and other kinds of programs. So this is an issue that's very close to my heart, and I just couldn't be happier than for this board to recognize it in Falls Church this year. So, thank you very much. Is there a motion on this item? And a second? Thank you. Excuse me, my throat got dry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right, thank you. We, I now will sign this proclamation, and we'll begin to promote throughout City Falls Church to our schools and our staff and our community about this important week. Thank you so much for coming tonight. It's great to see you.[746.82][746.82][applause] Did this come here? No, no, thank you.
We're going to cut out right quickly. Go to our book class, and we're discussing smartest kids in the world.
We won't take it personally. Everybody cuts out pretty quickly. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, that was fun. Next on the agenda is Item 7.02, which is Announcement of Supergrants, not just grants, but supergrants, from the Falls Church Education Foundation. And I believe the executive director, Debbie Hiscut, and a member of the board, Sharon Schuler, are going to talk to us about this.
Thank you very much for allowing me to join you all here tonight, ladies and gentlemen. And yes, I'm Debbie Hiscut, and the executive director of the Falls Church Education Foundation. And with me is Sharon Schuler. She's the vice president of the Board of Directors of the Foundation, and also was the chair of the Supergrants Subcommittee, and did a tremendous amount of work to get us to this place. The Falls Church Education Foundation is pleased to announce the results of our inaugural efforts to establish a supergrants program to further assist the Falls Church City Public School teachers and enhance the educational experience of their students. Supported by funds raised from the Foundation's annual gala and auction, our annual runs for the schools, and our academic boosters program, $45,000 in supergrants were awarded last week to seven out of 16 applicants. The total amount requested by all the applicants exceeded $145,000. Grant recipients were chosen on the basis of a rigorous selection process, which took into account criteria regarding projects or items that were, where funding was either unavailable or limited, projects that were innovative, needed seed money, or required new equipment, projects that are priority for the school system, or for the students who will benefit from them. The projects will benefit many students or smaller numbers of at-risk special population students, and will provide a direct educational benefit in terms of readiness to learn or an approach to teaching. We had a great opportunity to wander the halls of MEH and George Mason, awarding these. Hopefully you all saw photos in the morning announcements. Our students and our staff were thrilled to be receiving these. It was quite fun. We went into Dr. Mecca's class, and the kid said, "Did he win Teacher of the Year again?" No, these aren't the Agnes Meyer winning awards, but they are supergrants, and he did apply and win things for you all to do. And as an aside, I had a friend notify me that her son, who never tells her anything about school, came home and told her how thrilled he was to be in Dr. Mecca's class. I'll tell you a little bit more about that grant later, but how thrilled he was to be in that class and to be a recipient of the grant. So to hear from this student who never tells his parents anything, how he was impacted by the supergrant award was really quite fun, and it's been 10 years in the making for the Foundation. I'm going to walk you through what the supergrants awarded were. For Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, following on to, I wish we had all of our American AAUW women here to hear what this one is about, but it's called Makerspace at Henderson. And Dr. Susan Jinx and Lori Fogel were awarded $20,000. This grant will create the first Makerspace in a middle school in Northern Virginia. Makerspace is a space where people gather to create, invent, and learn together. It provides a hands-on approach to learning in areas such as video production, building, and coding, whiteboards where they can solve problems, and additional computers. It will be open to the entire school population at Mary Ellen Henderson during lunch and in an after-school program, two days a week. One of these days will be dedicated just to girls. The grant will pay for materials to create this space and teacher stipends in the initial stages. Benefits of this enrichment space can be enjoyed by every single MEH student. Additionally, at MEH, we awarded headphones for world language classes. Liz DeGaulle was the applicant, and we awarded $2,000 that will fund four classroom sets of headphones, one for each teacher. Headphones will enable students to use their laptops to personalize their learning, create their own recordings, and then listen to them. They can watch videos in foreign language and listen to audio in the target language. This grant will benefit 400 students each year. At George Mason High School, our program, our key stone program there is called Grow and Market, and the teachers, Dr. Mecca in the Science Department, James Leahy in Special Education, and Richard Kane in Food Services collaborated on this project. They were awarded $16,000. This grant will enable the Science and Food Services Departments to create a test pilot for GMHS students to grow and market high-quality specialty crops to the high school's own food service program for the use in school cafeteria. This project fits well with the USDA's Farm-to-School Program. The funding pays for a controlled environment, portable greenhouse, and hydroponic growing system. The goals are to supply student-grown vegetables to the Food Services Program, to provide students with real-world business skills, to develop a science-based program using controlled environment agriculture, and to determine the desirability of having a permanent greenhouse at the new high school. At that time, this portable greenhouse will become an instructional classroom within the Science Department. The entire student body of George Mason High School will benefit. Additionally, and we hope you guys will take advantage of this grant, this week in fact, is a grant called Sound Choices. This was submitted by the entire Visual and Performing Arts staff at George Mason High School, West Blue, Robar, Shields, Carple, and Northrop. They were awarded $11,929, and it will enable the Visual and Performing Arts Department to purchase new audio and lighting control equipment. This equipment includes headset microphones, wireless microphones, a digital audio mixer, and digital lightboard. This grant will benefit all of the Visual and Performing Arts students, the entire George Mason population, stage crew, and audiences at school, and all of our community events. So hopefully you all will join us on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at Phantom of the Opera, and hopefully these will all work really well and be a great use of this grant money. Like MEH, one of the applicants at George Mason was for a Makerspace improvement, and that was for John Blue. He was awarded $6,000. This grant funds the purchase of a flatbed plasma cutter with two-axis capability for wood and sheet metal, and will also adapt the space with a waterbed base, a 220-volt power source and ventilation. This grant will benefit current and future technical and robotic students. System-wide, we had a couple of grants. One is called Online Mindfulness Curriculum Training by Sharon Hoffman, our school psychologist. This is an online course that contains curriculum designed for K-12 students. Research suggests that youths who participate in this curriculum demonstrate increases in empathy, in-class participation, attention, interpersonal functioning, and more. The training will be used initially with at-risk students, such as those with IEPs, 504 plans, and designated as ESOL. The goal is to use the curriculum in the future in our general education setting. And last, but not least, of our first supergrants is an emergency fund that we've established for our social workers staff, submitted by Robin Borum. This establishes a fund for our social workers to work with our struggling FCCPS family to make ends meet. The needs can include utilities, transportation, gas cards, perishable food items, or food gift cards, winter clothes, and shoes, immediate help, immediate medical help, et cetera. Essentially, a fund that our social workers can use to designate when so needed, so they don't have to ask every time they need to have a card. So those are our grants. We were thrilled to be able to award them. The staff submitted some excellent, well-researched, well-documented applications. We were thrilled to receive them. Clearly, there's a need. We were able to award about, you know, less than a third of the requests, so that gives us our directive for the next year to continue to raise funds and ask for support from our community so that we can do this again next year, and we can come back and tell you what great ideas our staff have implemented. Thank you very much. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions? I'm going to look to my left first on this one.
I shook my microphone. No questions, but thank you so much that those programs are lovely and wonderful, and just goes to show what, you know, your hard work in raising these funds has, it's paid off, and hopefully next year, we'll, you know, with the impetus from this year and all these wonderful programs, we'll have more participation with the fundraising. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this end?
Just had a question about the mindfulness course, which sounds really interesting. How's that going to be delivered? And will people outside the schools have a shot at it? Will be on YouTube or something accessible like that? Because it sounds really quite interesting.
Sharon Hoffman is going to roll it out with this target audience first, and then try to do, you know, have some metrics on, subjective metrics, on how successful it was, and ask feedback from the students and from the staff. And with the intent is it for it to be successful enough to roll it out to the general student body, but I can certainly ask her about rolling it out even further, because there are many of us who could use that that are no longer students, but I'll ask and get back to you.
These are all great ideas. I think it's a great space to fill, this kind of opportunistic, giving people a chance to try things out. So I think this is absolutely wonderful, the Foundation is doing this, and I hope that there'll come a time where you have more money than projects, so thanks.
That would be a good problem to have.
Wouldn't that be nice? Anyone on this end have a question or a comment? Mr. Sharp?
I believe at our previous meeting, there was a sort of an emergency request that we, as a board, approved the receipt of a particular one of these grants that would help to facilitate the Phantom of the Opera play this weekend. We were glad, very glad to receive the request and did act upon it at the previous meeting. Thank you very, very much. This is really super.
Great. And stay tuned, we'll have more information. There were other grants that we were not able to find funding for through our supergrant program, but we've been working hard with private donors to match their interests with some of our staff, so you'll hear more information about those that were awarded as well. And some of them were facilitated through our, we gave each PTA a grant from which they could use however they see fit, but the elementary school is using for a couple of grants to Laura Dixon, who was here, for two more STEM projects that she's working on with her students there. So we're working through the elementary PTA, middle school, and high school PTAs as well, and you'll hear more information about some readiness to learn in programs that we're going to be funding as well, outside of the supergrant program.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lawrence, did you have anything? I just want to thank you and let you know that it just seems in the past three, two years that the Education Foundation has really stepped up its game, and the community notices, the students and teachers and staff notice it. We notice it here, and we really appreciate it. I just, when I first got on Board Docs to look at this meeting, just the breadth and depth of the things that you're funding for our kids, it's just amazing, so thank you so very much. And Tony, would you please draft a letter from the full board to the Education Foundation Executive Director and Board, letting them know how much we appreciate this? Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Since we began our meeting, we do have a couple of speaker slips. We've already been through that part of our agenda for this, tonight, the public comments and requests. We could amend the agenda to take up these comments after our business section and before our future agenda topic session, if the board would like to do that. And so I'm asking if there would be a motion on the part of the board to amend the agenda in that way. Yes, Mr. Lawrence, you moved in a second on this end. Did you have, okay, all in favor would say aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, so we'll take these up at the end of our business agenda, so you're going to have to sit tight and wait for a few minutes. All right, the next item is Approval of First Reading of a Number of Bylaws, and I'll ask Mr. Horn to please come forward and help us through this part. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. This should be a short session in that there are no revisions. This is following along previous boards' requests that we continue to update our policies, even if we are not revising them, so that all current boards have relatively recent policy looks. So this month, we're looking at Section 2, School Board Bylaws. Again, there are no revisions to existing policies proposed, but it's important to take a look at them now.
Yep.
And if the board approves first reading and then second reading again in December, we will change the notation in the policy manual to reflect the current view.
All right, thanks very much. Let me ask if there are questions from anybody on the dais about these particular ones, whether you think there are some that should be amended that weren't, or, yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one question on 2.17 about the Board Council. Does this mean the Board Council needs to attend all our meetings?
Because it says.
You have. Will attend regular meetings or its committees upon request? And I just, I know we've got a requirement for the, we can't have a meeting without the superintendent, and I think that's a state requirement, but are we also saying we can't have a meeting without Tom here?
That isn't what it's saying. It is giving permission for the school attorney, either me or outside council, to attend board meetings, included closed session, should that be necessary.
Okay, so it's just.
Not a mandate to have.
Permission, not a requirement. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes. Mr. Castillo?
Just a question on Bylaw 2.1. It says the school board derives its authority from the Constitution, the Virginia Code, and State Board of Education regulations. Does the charter give us any powers? Should that be in there? I ask out of ignorance. I don't know. Does, should, should the charter be there, or?
It should not. It does not offer additional powers.
Okay, it's simply describes what they are.
So those already enumerated in code, right.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
We would exist whether the charter said we existed or not, because school divisions are designated by the Board of Education.
Right, okay.
Yes, Mr. Sharp?
2.13, the last sentence indicates that on any advisory committee, Board or Commission of School Board liaison can make no commitment for the full school board. I would ask that we add a phrase at the end of that to set, to the effect, except as directed by the full board.
Which would be appropriate for others that may be questioning. The board certainly has the authority to designate one of its members or multiple members to represent the full board.
All right, any other questions on this? Any other questions on this? Is there a motion to approve the first reading of these bylaws?
As amended.
As amended by Mr. Sharp. Thank you. Mr. Ankuma moves, and Mr. Lawrence seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Horn. We'll look for these back in December with the amendment proposed by Mr. Sharp. All right. Next thing on our agenda is an update on IB and PISA testing results. Did you have something you wanted to say in introduction, or is Jeannie Seabridge going to take us through it?
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Seabridge, Assistant Director of Teaching, Learning, and Achievement, and I'm here tonight to show you a snapshot of the results from George Mason High School last spring when they took a PISA assessment. I also have a little bit of data on IB from last year as well. Just to clarify too, the actual test is based on PISA assessment data that is given every three years internationally, and it's referred to, just so you understand when we're talking about this with acronyms and everything, it's OECD Test for Schools, based on the PISA data. PISA, the acronym stands for Program for International Student Assessment, and OECD actually stands for Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. And that is the organization that actually runs the PISA assessment every three years and the assessment that our students took last spring. The difference between the two is that the PISA assessment is more for international comparisons and to inform policy discussions, whereas the OECD Test for Schools is designed for the school level so that we can check the results for benchmarking and school improvement purposes. It also allows us to compare a student's level of proficiency in three key subjects with the levels of peers in our country and in some of the world's highest-performing school systems. On this slide, which I'm sure you're going to get a copy of, there's two videos here, so if you do want some more information, there's a very short video clips that you can watch it at your own leisure. The OECD Test for Schools, it's a school-level assessment based on PISA that measures 15-year-old students' applied knowledge and competencies in reading, mathematics, and science. Over 70 countries and economies have participated in various PISA cycles, and these results are used in the report. The results are based on a two-hour assessment administered to 52 students between November 2013 and 2014. Students were also asked to fill out a questionnaire that was used to obtain information on their socioeconomic backgrounds and on their engagement with attitudes towards learning and the school learning environment. The results, a quick snapshot, this was a very extensive report, so I just went through and pulled out pieces of that. The snapshot is kind of the big picture right here. We're looking at George Mason High School, the United States, the highest performing in PISA, which was Shanghai, China, and then the lowest performing in PISA, which was Mexico. You can see that our score points for George Mason for reading is 559, and the United States overall was 500, so we are above that average. And then Shanghai was at 556, very close, and Mexico at 425. In mathematics, we scored at 564. The average in the United States was 487, Shanghai 600, and Mexico 419. And then in science, we were at 563. The United States average was 502, with Shanghai at 575, and then Mexico at 416. And I apologize if you can't see these too well, they're a little light. The reading area, where are we in the world in reading? And what they did here was they took a few selected countries and economies, and you can see there Shanghai is ranked at the top, Finland, Korea, Canada, Japan, and so on. And the red mark over on the left-hand side is actually George Mason. So if you're looking at this right now, we are above many of the other international countries and pretty much neck and neck with Shanghai in reading. In mathematics, you'll notice that we are still doing fairly well compared to some other countries internationally. Shanghai has jumped a little bit ahead of us with the performance in the mathematics. In science, again, we're holding pretty well in the five, above the 550 mark, and Shanghai is slightly above. The other thing that the assessment did is it ranked us with socioeconomic backgrounds in the United States, so it looked at schools in the United States that were similar to our own school division here in Falls Church City. So when we're looking at this one in reading, and I know that, I apologize again, this is hard to see, there's a little tiny red dot right there. And the reason the dots are different sizes is the size of the school. So if you have a tiny school, you have a tiny little dot. If it's a really large school, the circle is much larger. So George Mason is right here, and the main thing that we want to look at here is that we are at the trend line. We don't want to be below the trend line, and that is that we're performing at the level that is expected for our school, based on comparison with other schools that are similar to ours. Some are slightly above, and some are slightly below. And again, these are not just private or public schools, these also could be considered private schools as well.
Ms. Seabridge, can I just, you might have said it, but the blue band is above and below. So those are the schools that actually are in our.
Right here.
Same SES area.
Yep. In mathematics, we're slightly above, and you can see our little red dot right there. And this is our comparison, like Dr. Jones mentioned, here in this band. In science, we're pretty much right on the line. And basically, the results coming from that is that our school is performing at the level that would reasonably be expected of schools with similar students in the United States in all three subject areas of reading, mathematics, and science. How do we compare with public and private schools in the United States? Looking at this one, you'll notice that George Mason is over here. In the center, they're looking at public schools in the United States, and then over here, they're comparing to private schools. So when you look at this, you'll notice that we're pretty similar to what a private school would be in the United States, and slightly, like, above regular public school. The reason that there's two marks is it's looking at the socioeconomic backgrounds. The first one is before, considering that, and then the second mark is after, considering socioeconomic. And that's for reading. Mathematics is similar. Again, we're high above the United States' mean score, and then the private schools, we're pretty similar. And again, in science. Student engagement and the learning environment, this is the survey piece of the assessment, and the kids were asked certain questions that they had to respond to. It was based on socioeconomic backgrounds, engagement with and attitudes towards learning, and the school learning environment. When we're looking at this one, George Mason, they are the red marks here. If you see an upwards triangle, that means that it's the average percentage of the 10% highest performing students in, in reading or English. And if you see a downward triangle, that is the average percentage of the 10% lowest performing students in, in reading. If it is dark, that means that we are statistically different from those schools. And then the lighter area, or triangle, means that we are very similar. We're looking at, the questions that they were asked is, the kids are agreeing, "Percent of students reporting that the phenomena occur never or hardly ever, or in some lesson." So one of the questions would be, "Students don't listen to what the teacher says." That our students don't feel that that occurs very often. "There is noise and disorder in the classroom." Again, our students pretty much don't feel that's an issue. "The teacher has to wait a long time for the students to quiet down." Again, that's, doesn't seem to be a problem. "Students cannot work well." And then the last one, "Students don't start working for a long time after the lesson begins." And you see, we are above the average of what other students may have said in the United States. In mathematics, again, George Mason is the red area here. The questions that they asked on the survey, "Students don't listen to what teachers say." They're very similar. And our kids feel that, that kids do listen to our teachers here in Falls Church, and that's very high. And then when we're looking at teacher-student relations, the questions that they asked here, "I get along well with most of my teachers." Kids feel that they do. "Most of my teachers are interested in my well-being." Again, that's up in the, a pretty high area. "Most of my teachers really listen to what I have to say." We did drop on that survey question, down in around 70%. And if I need extra help, I will receive it from my teachers. Again, it went back up. And most of my teachers treat me fairly. They feel that, that is, they agree with that statement. And the results from this, they're finding that the disciplinary climate in English and mathematics lessons at George Mason is similar to the average for the 10% highest performing students in reading and mathematics for the United States, based on the PISA. "Students at your school also report that teacher-student relations are similar to the average for the 10% highest performing students in reading in the United States." Other questions they asked were about motivation in mathematics. And we see here that the diamond shape is the United States, and our red mark is George Mason. One question being, "Making an effort in mathematics is worth it because it will help me in the work that I want to do later." This is showing in a little above 80% of students who agree or strongly agree with that statement. "Learning mathematics is important because it will help me with the subjects that I want to study further on in school." Dipped a little bit into the high 70s. "Mathematics is an important subject for me because I need it for what I want to study later on." Dropping down at about 70%, believe that. And then the last question, "I will learn many things in mathematics that will help me get a job." And we seem to dip down into the 60s on that survey question. So we may have a little work to do on careers. Self-efficacy in mathematics. Our kids are scoring fairly high here. Percentage of students who feel confident or very confident about having to do this task. And the first task is saying, "Using a trained timetable to work out how long it would take to get from one place to another." They feel that they can work that out in about 80%. Calculating how much cheaper a TV would be to get a 30% discount, they all felt they could do that, get that discount. Calculating how many square meters of tiles you need to cover a floor, they, they're good at that. They think that maybe they can renovate their home later on. Understanding graphs presented in newspapers, very high. Solving an equation would be high as well, up in the 90s. Finding the actual distance between two places on a map, again, they're in the 80s. And then solving another equation using algebraic expressions. Calculating the gas mileage of a car, they somehow dropped down a little bit below 80 on that. And then science, again, you can see very, very similar questions that they're asking here in science, but you do notice a little difference on the science and, and the way that they're answering those questions. Percentage of students who agree or strongly agree with the statement. "I study school science because I know it is useful for me." It is a little bit lower than what they might have answered with the math. And self-efficacy, percentage of students who believe they can perform the task, and some of the questions here are about earthquakes and being able to explain why they occur more frequently in some areas than another. The one down here, where they're in about a little bit of 50%, identified the science question associated with the disposal of garbage. So they weren't so sure about that task. And the results here show that students believe the study of mathematics at school to be for their future is similar to the average for the United States. While they report that instrumental motivation in science, how useful students believe the study of science at school to be for their future is lower than the average for the United States in PISA. At our school, students' confidence and their ability to successfully deal with mathematics-related tasks and science-related tasks is higher than the average for the United States. Here are some of the questions. This is just like to show you what the kids had to answer. They, for reading, they had to read a passage and then ask, answer some questions from the passage. This passage is on Indian mystic claims not to eat for 70 years. And then here's a mathematics one that they may have had to answer on tiles, in tiling patterns. And then in science, here's one that they had to answer concerning oil spills. At the bottom, this is how many questions they actually had in that category. So in science, they had 54. And that's the PISA section. For international baccalaureate, I just have a little information. Last time we presented on IB, we didn't have as much information. We have the official report now for IB, and the numbers that you see here, I can show the number of candidates who registered for the session last year in the spring, there was 241 candidates. Number of diploma and retake candidates registered in the session were 52. Number of subject entries in the session, 844. A lot. Number of candidates who successfully passed the diploma, 45. Average points obtained by candidates who passed the diploma was 31 out of 45 possible. Highest diploma points awarded to a candidate at our school was 40. Average grade obtained at the school by candidates who passed the diploma was a 4.93. And total number of candidates excluded, there's none. And then the only other piece I have for IB is this one, and this does show all of the IB courses that our students sat for. The areas that are in yellow, that are highlighted, show that our students' average was higher than the average worldwide in those courses when they took that assessment. That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions? Anyone? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
I think this was the first time that we had participated in PISA. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And it's only administered every three years?
The PISA assessment, the international one, is every three years. The one for schools, I think, is every year we could participate.
Okay. I guess at some point, I would hope that we could receive some information as to whether it would be valuable for us to do this on a continuing basis with the PISA. I think there is some consternation over how many tests kids are supposed to, to take, and so I, you know, I would like to have some, some comment on whether, whether this one is valuable alongside the others that are, that our students are taking, and at the same time, if there are some that, that are not valuable, and that we may be in some way compelled to take them by, by federal or state mandate, that we also receive some information about that, so that we can advocate for a, a reduction in those, those mandates. We have had some success in, in achieving such a reduction where, where that was appropriate, and I hope we can continue to refine what we do so that these assessments that we make are really valuable for our students.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Lawrence?
Just, I know we had to, I know we wanted to take the PISA test for a while, and we had to qualify. Since we've done it once, does that mean we can keep doing it? Do we have to requalify? How does it work?
I think it's our choice. We could keep doing it, but then we, we have to make that decision, like Mr. Sharp said, you know, our purpose for doing it, what are we looking for? I think the last spring, we took it just to get a feel for where we are, to make sure that we are on the right path, and our kids are performing at the expected level, based on other schools in the nation. on other schools in the nation that are, have the same demographic that we do. There were some areas that I pointed out in the presentation that, you know, we may, our scores may have been a little lower. And it, it does kind of make us think, you know, why might we be there? Like science, for example, there was a little bit of a difference between that and reading and math. So it, it kind of gives us that pause, you know, why is that? Is there something about our program or curriculum, something that maybe we could tweak a little bit to, to do better? Whether or not we want to do it every year, I mean, I'm not sure about that, if we would need to. Just gives us that snapshot to kind of look inside of, of how we're performing.
Anything else, Ms. Jankuma?
Yes, to the, to the, to the point about taking it every three years, does that mean some kids take them and other kids don't?
It's a random selection of students. Only about 52 students were selected from George Mason. We have no control over who they were. It's a very controlled group of students so that they are normed across the nation so that it's the same balance and it's, it's, it's equal when we're looking at the data. It wouldn't be the same kids. I'm assuming every year, they would pick a, a new batch, you know, of kids that they choose to do the test if we decided that we were going to pursue it again at George Mason. The only thing, the criteria they have is they have to be the 15-year-old students.
And you're saying there's an external party or body that pre-selects these kids based on?
The organization, actually, I think it was McGraw-Hill, would, they were the ones kind of administering the assessment. And they took care of the, the random selection process with all the schools that participated in the assessment.
They asked for us to send a collection of different data points. And from those data points, they select the sampling and tell us which students we need to administer the assessment to. So they asked Mr. Byrd to supply, you know, the ethnicity, lots of different components. And then they selected and told us which 15-year-olds we needed to, to test.
And to Mr. Sharp's point, is there, is that a mandate? Are we doing McGraw-Hill a favor? How does, how does all this, you know, why do we do it?
Well, this, this past year, we decided we wanted to just get a feel for what the PISA examination could, could share, could share with us. There are a few other divisions, surrounding divisions who do it. For example, Fairfax did it. We had the superintendent from there contacted me, asking if we wanted to be a part of, of the, this group. And we decided, talked to Mr. Byrd and decided we would do it this year. We've not made a decision as to whether we will continue to do it. The next, there will be a test administered in 2015, but we've not made a decision as to whether we'll do it. I know we're looking possibly at doing other things like the PRIDE survey for this school year. We do want to be careful how many different assessments we administer or surveys we administer to our students.
But I think one of the upsides, Ms. Jankuma, is that this gives us some sense of how our students are performing relative to kids around the world, rather than in Virginia or in the U.S. And so I think that's one of the upsides is, is that, so. Mr. Kestia, do you have any questions or comments?
I, just to follow up a little on Mr. Jankuma's question. So what, what have we learned by taking this test? What does it tell us? I mean, it tells us where, you know, usually the headlines are, PISA shows that Shanghai beats everybody else. We're, we're doing pretty well, it seems, so.
Right.
What, will we do anything differently? What, how, how does this change your view of, of our mission and how we're fulfilling it?
I think, one thing I see is it tells us our kids are, are ready for their future globally. I mean, they can compete because they have the skills for that. So internationally, it's not just if they decide they're going to get a, a job and there's other people from other countries competing for that, they have the skills to be able to, to do well. The other thing I see is that we're on the right path. I mean, we're where we should be. We are performing very well and that's what is expected of us and that's where we want to stay. And the other thing I think is there's also a little room for growth. It isn't like we are, you know, right at the top and there's that, that ceiling and we can't go any further, that there are some areas that we probably could improve in. And those are some areas that we really need to take a look at.
Is there, there's no way to get into IB schools and, and figure out how IB schools do on PISA, is there? That, that's too fine a cut, I would expect.
I'm not sure. I haven't looked at that. I think we could probably find some in, in Virginia that may have taken this assessment that are IB schools. And, and I'm not sure we have privy to their data, though I think it's private. That would be the problem.
Yeah. Sorry?
Issue is these are 10th graders and they're not in the IB program yet.
That's, that's true, but we'll get there eventually.
And wipe your clothes out.
Mm-hmm. It would be an even smaller set if you looked for schools that were NYPD programs, right?
Right.
It would be a lot smaller.
And I think one thing internationally that I like about the PISA is we couldn't practice for the PISA.
Right.
Where IB, you know, the content, you know what you're teaching, you know, on an AP exam nationally, but this was really how our kids are doing compared to other, you know, similar schools around the world.
Right.
Yeah, and I guess, just one final thought is, well, I think this is great. I, I do think that trying to be more like the Chinese system of education is not what we want to do. I read an interesting article that said, there have been a billion Chinese educated in their system over the last 65 years and not, no Chinese student has received a Nobel Prize. And creativity and probing boundaries is something I think that a pure testing regimen doesn't give you. So I think the STEM thing that we saw earlier today kind of shows that we're keeping our perspective, which is good, so.
Right, definitely. All right.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I think that's pretty exciting.
Yes, I'm sure. Once we have a, a STEM or STEAM committee, I think it would be good to have that committee provide a, a review of, since this is at least two-thirds in science and, and math, ask them to provide some feedback to us on what value they feel this, this would have for us going forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The next item we have is the draft of the CIP request that the superintendent has prepared. I want to let folks know that I'm going to ask her to just give us the highlights. We are going to have a work session on this topic where we can dig down and ask all the questions we want. And we will be asked at our first meeting in January to approve this, to send over to the planning commission. So the goal tonight is just to familiarize you with it. And then we're going to ask you to please send questions or concerns to Tony and myself before our work session in December so that we can pull those together and prepare the right information for our discussion and our work session. So with that, Dr. Jones.
And I know I did send you a memo on this. It is just the projects. All of our Welding-Cooper projections and the charts that usually go in the CIP are being updated right now. We just got those preliminary numbers on Friday. One thing that you'll notice on the first page where it has the 10-year master plan is, I realized during the referendum that people aren't understanding where we started and where we're going. And so I went ahead and added the whole planning cycle in here, just so people can see that do look at the CIP. And obviously, we'll need to discuss whether the school board agrees where, how I've put the GM MEH planning cycle on here. That one is, is one that we, we need discussion on. Behind that, on the project list, because Mount Daniel passed, which was wonderful, it didn't change our CIP, you know, a lot. The one thing you'll notice is football soccer is in here. The price has increased a little bit. Obviously, each year we wait, that's what happens. This may come off of our CIP. We're working with Danny Schlitt at the city and he feels he might as well just put it all on the Park and Rec side, that he was happy to have it on his CIP. That was his recommendation. So if that's easier for the city in handling the CIP, we can put it on, on Park and Recs. We do still have the track resurface in here, system renewal. That main thing is the TJ HVAC and that work is, we want to get that done this summer. The other thing that I have put in here that we've talked about the last two years were two buses. And that is, I've put that in here to help us have that discussion about, are we going to allow buses inside the CIP? Because the last two years, that is what, we've pulled those buses out of the budget. And I fully expect this year, we know we need buses. So I've put it in here to help that discussion so we can get some, a final answer. But that's just it in a nutshell. And again, the projects really have not changed, so.
All right. Thanks very much. Are there any clarifying questions? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
With the, this is the next to last page. Anyway, page five is indicating some comment about utilities. And that, I think that would be a, a, operating expense, is that right? But, but we are attempting to try to reflect whether there would be a major change in that category. Is that, is that what that's there for?
That's correct. These categories are actually set by the city and I'm expected to respond to, like, project detail and impact cost. And that's the framework that I have to respond to when we present to the city.
Okay. Well, one of the things that, when Mary Ellen Henderson was, was done, for example, was there was a, another building was added to the, you know, to the, to the inventory for our buildings. And one of the major costs that resulted was a, essentially a custodial cost for caring for the, the extra square footage that we now had to, to cover. And I wonder, is, is there a, an appropriate category like this? I know in, in the utilities, we anticipate that because the building will be much more efficient than our current space, that, that there'd essentially be a, you know, a, a wash as far as any increase in utilities costs. But that's, that's not necessarily the case in, in custodial management. So I think it would be helpful for us to try to anticipate what those changes would be as we have, I think we're planning, at least on the surface of it, some major increase in, in square footage. We, we will, we will need to go through exactly how much is, is really needed there as we, as we go through our visioning and other, other processes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Tony, could you just clarify how that would work with the Parks and Rec taking over, taking the football field?
The last, the last two years, we just have split the request. So it was $400,000 last year. We had $200,000 on the school side. Danny Schlitt put 200 on Park and Rec. And it's easier really if it is presented in the city just as one project, because the reality is it's going to be paid from just, you know, one spot. And so I think it's just for the ease. I don't know if Mr. Horn has anything to add to that, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Jankuma, you have something?
Does that change when it, it actually happens or could it affect the timing of the funding? Either parts of the school's CIP may be deferred, but theirs isn't, or vice versa? And in terms of control, it maybe doesn't happen with control or use of the facilities, but do we lose anything by allowing Parks and Recs to have it in their budget?
No. I mean, our facility use is through our MOU that we have with the city. And all the scheduling is done on the city side and we max out all of our school property with Park and Rec already. So I don't see that having an impact on future use.
The only thing I would ask you to think about, Dr. Jones, before we have our work session, is we have a number of things that we know may break at George Mason High School between now and the construction or renovation or modernization of that facility. And they aren't things that we're planning to upgrade or replace, but that may need to be upgraded or replaced and they're a significant dollar volume. And I'm, I'm wondering how we make the community aware of that possibility, make the city council and the city manager aware of that possibility. I don't know quite how to communicate that those things may occur, but if, and I don't want to give any answer tonight. If you could just think about that and, and I think that'd be an important discussion for us to have when we talk about the CIP.
Right. And I, I've plugged in 400,000 in FY '17. I'm not sure it's enough.
Well, I saw that, but last I heard, if something happened with the HVAC system, it would be millions, right? And so I just, I don't want to scare anybody, but I think the community needs to understand that, you know, stuff may happen. And it may be big that we, that we need, so. All right. Very good. Thank you for that. The next item is the 2014 Delegate Handbook. I assume that that just means, for those of you who are going to the VSBA conference, this is a piece of material and information that you can have in advance to help you prepare for your trip, particularly if you are our official delegate or our alternate delegate. Next, Dr. Jones, if you could give us a construction update, in particular, if you could focus on the parking lot at the Thackeray School.
Woo-hoo. Thackeray is, the building, of course, looks beautiful, coming along great. The parking lot, everything is on schedule as of right now. And we have about five or six days left for them to have it completed so we can be working on the asphalt the first week in December. And again, I'll be watching very closely now through Friday because every day counts and we have asked them to work the weekend if necessary. We're planning on having the moving truck here December 5th, 6th, 7th is the Sunday, and then teachers would be in the new space on December 8th. And so they have boxes and they're all preparing for that. And it looks really good. We're working closely with the city. And one of the things we were concerned about was if the asphalt plant closes, what does that mean to us? And we have a solution with the city where they will allow us just to do the foundation. And the asphalt company, even if the weather drops, will still do that minimal, just, it's kind of like when they take the road and shave it down before they redo it. What it means is that if it cracks, we can't hold the asphalt company or hold them liable. But then they come in, in the spring and do the whole layer over the top. So we're not concerned about that. And the city will allow us to have occupancy with that thin layer. So we feel much better today than we did a week or so ago. Then at Mount Daniel, of course, thanks to everybody that worked on the referendum, lots of hard work there. We've already had our first official meeting, you know, with Grunley. We had our first ASAC meeting tonight, that's where we were. So we are getting to work on really what we, what we want to do and, and so we stay on our timeline there as well. And then I just add, and I mentioned earlier, the Welding-Cooper numbers came in on Friday. The one thing I have asked them to go back out and do is to please run the numbers K12, 3, 4, 5, out the 20 years. So, because they were using our regular configuration. And they only do, you know, just a decade out where you're looking at a single grade and then they go into the cohorts. So they're, they're rerunning those for me right now with the new. I really didn't want to ask it before the referendum passed because I didn't know which one we were going to need. So they're working on that this week. And that's it. Busy, busy.
Yeah, lots to do. Any questions about that? Anything else we need to know? All right. Good to see that project moving forward. That's going to just be a terrific, terrific thing for our kids. All right. Next on the agenda is, on our amended agenda, is public comment. We have two slips for public comment and I'll call them in order. And just as a reminder to the, to the public who's commenting, you have three minutes to make your comments. Please give us your name and your address at the, up top. And it looks like number one is Allison Kuchma.
I live at 813 Fulton Avenue. Just want to talk to you tonight about information flow. And I feel it's really important to get good information and full information about something that you need to have information about. I was thinking that in terms of the ILMS issue that has come up and how the information has flowed and how it's provided and, and just the perception of what's happening versus what's happening. And I know that might not make sense to you, but I'll, I'll try to make it make sense. So I went to, I'm interested in our smaller population. So I went to an ESAL committee meeting recently. And I'm, I think either Justin will report on this at some point, but, so, Mr. Byrd was there and he made a presentation about all the wonderful things that are being provided to our ESAL students. And it sounded amazing. I mean, it just, up and down, like all this stuff. And you're sitting there and it's like, this is great. And that's the thing about information. I mean, it sounds good, but how do you know if it really is? And there was a parent there. And so she spoke and she said, excuse me, Mr. Byrd, I'm an ESAL parent and I've never heard of 90% of what you're presenting. And he included that letters go home and they reach out to families. And she said, I've never got a letter. And she said, "I've never got a letter." So I just offer that as like, there can, and it's not that what he's saying isn't true, and it isn't that it isn't well-meaning, but there is a disconnect sometimes between what's presented and what's really happening. And so with the ILMS issue, which I'll call it that, but it's really more a sort of a systemic special ed problem, is that there's issues and there's information, but there's a disconnect. And I went to the Special Education Advisory Meeting. And Dr. Jones spoke, and I'm just even more concerned, because there's information presented that doesn't really make sense. And I realize there's people around the table. And if you don't know the issue, you don't even know that it doesn't make sense. But you guys on the school board need to get smart on it and know that it makes sense. And I'm available. I'm available to help you do that. I'm concerned we have a director of special ed. Either she doesn't know that it doesn't make sense, or, you know, it's really important that she understands how the law works. And it's really important for these kids to get the help that they need and to get it early. And Dr. Jones offered at that meeting that she told Liz that all the parents could ask for an ILMS class if they needed one for one student. And that's true. That's the law. But she told Liz, she's saying in the meeting that she told Liz that. So it doesn't help to tell Liz. These parents need to know that. And do they know that? Most parents don't know that about special education law, that if one child needs it, they get it. And that's the whole point of why that process of having those decisions made in I E P T means was so critical to the process, because parents can have access to what they need. And a random parent isn't just going to know that they can knock on the door and say, you know, my kid needs this.
Can you wrap it up, please?
And so anyway, just need respect for the process. We need a director of special ed that understands the law so she could correct staff when they make mistakes. That's really critical. I'm going to keep saying it until it happens.
Thank you, Allison.
You guys need good information. That's all.
All right. Oh, there it is. I'm so sorry. Ha ha. So number two tonight is Dave Kuchma.
Okay, my name's Dave Kuchma. I live at 813 Fulton Avenue. And thanks for switching your agenda to hear us out. I'm here to dovetail a little bit on what my wife just talked about. We've lived here for about 12 years. We have three special education kids that have gone through the schools. So part of what, you know, I and my wife, we hope that we share with you is our experience. We've had a chance to go through the system. And a lot of what I'm speaking to is at the high school, our experience, our experience over three children for, you know, geez, you know, almost a decade now. And it dovetails a little bit into the ILMS piece when you go through. And, you know, there's some information out there where there's a lot of emails that have gone through. And I think the issue, and as we hear the term transparency has come about, you can see what happens, see what goes on behind the scenes. And in our experience, we look to, what I'll call the wait-and-see approach. And we've kind of seen this happen with our kids, you know, kind of year after year. As they come back, it's new. And maybe one thing that is kind of missed, maybe in the culture, is that disabilities don't necessarily go away. Maybe the kid that has muscular dystrophy in a wheelchair, they come back again next year. They've got the same wheelchair, they've got the same issue. And a lot of these things are chronic. So you can't just pretend that maybe it went away over the summer. So, you know, I kind of digress into that a little bit. But it gets down to the key of what I didn't see in the emails and in the transparency is our director of special education, our parent liaison, saying, "Whoa, wait a, whoa, what's going on here? Let me, let's, you know, this, what are we going to do with these kids? And please, read it, read between the lines." And it's what we've experienced, is that there's this wait-and-see mentality. Maybe it'll go away. Maybe these kids will go away. And, you know, it's in our heart. It's our passion. We don't want to see 10 kids, or five kids, or two kids just get lost, because, you know, we're going to see how they do after the first quarter. And if they need help, or, you know, we're going to send them down to the resource room, or, you know, we'll address it the next I E P meeting. And, but then it gets lost. You know, this is their shot. You come in, they've got one self-esteem. And what happens with it? Does it, is it built up, or is it lost? And then you're going through a tier, or going back in. So I just throw out concern that a little bit of, and we've been at this a long time, that, you know, the same leadership, when Tony was brand new, they're still there. You know, what wasn't said, I think, is very telling. And I think that we could do better, you know, for this section of kids that, you know, have this, you know, I'll call it sort of like the invisible disability, the AD, you know, HDs, the ADDs, the executive function kids, that you can't look at them and say, "Well, where's your wheelchair?" Well, it's not, it's, you don't see it. So please, you know, take, you know, those comments, just our wisdom, and take a hard look at what we've got and how we can make things better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next on our agenda is the thing we call future agenda topics, which is the opportunity for anybody on the board to suggest items they would like us to discuss in the future that aren't currently on the docket and see if there's enough interest across the board for us to take them up. So does anybody have anything they'd like us to take up? That's not already on the agenda? Yes?
Here we go. I was, my interest was piqued by the PISA exam. And is that, and I don't know if this is something we discuss later, but is that a policy, is a decision to take the, to allow the students to take, the sampling of the students to take it, school board policy? Is that something that's at the discretion of administration? How does that work out?
Questions? Yeah, when we were working with the PISA, we actually checked with their parents to make sure that they could actually, they were okay with taking the assessment. Because it made us a little nervous, because we don't usually give assessments to only 52 students who are 15 and fit certain categories. So we made sure it was okay with the parents for them to actually take the assessment. They don't, we don't get their individual results, so it was just collectively as a school. You said what you're asking.
So that it's not, it's not something that the school board or have a policy around these additional tests?
It's really driven by Lisa's office on these assessments, because it's a curriculum issue. And so it's really, we're trusting our whole curriculum team to make sure our kids are balanced in what we're asking, you know, the school sites to do, and working with the principal. If Mr. Bird had said, "Oh, absolutely not. We don't, we just don't want to do this," we wouldn't have done it. But it was one of those assessments that we really wanted to know if it was going to give us data that we weren't getting somewhere else. And the two questions we get asked a lot, "How would we compare to a private school?" And this one actually gives us that information. And we even hear that during the budget, you know, a lot. And then also just internationally, how our kids compare beyond just an I B score, which we weren't getting that anywhere else.
Yeah. There are certain tests that kids take that the state requires, as we all know, right? SOLs and others. Other things that the test the kids take are up to our head of curriculum. Certainly, if the board had a particular test we thought that all kids should take, we'd bring it for discussion and, you know. But we don't have a policy as a school board on, you know, we must, kids must take A, B, C, D, and E, because it's really, the state's going to require it, or our staff of experts are going to decide what gives teachers and staff the best assessment of where kids are and where they're going. Any other, anybody have stuff they want to see on the agenda? I haven't seen a lot of head shaking. All right. Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jones?
Just a couple of items. And I wish Laura could have stayed longer, but just an update on her girls' coding class is going great at TJ. And it kind of goes along with the whole, you know, with the theme tonight with STEAM, and really bringing in a lot of women in the profession in front of the girls' coding. And just as a reminder, she's in a special program through George Mason University. That's why it's only girls. And they're actually, you know, doing a research study. In the spring, it will be opened up to all gender. So, and she did have 150 students who wanted in the program, girls, and they could only take 50. So we know the need is there for everything that you heard tonight. And also just Rob Carey, who was here as well, is such a leader on that front also for us. And he is the one you might have seen in morning announcements that got back from London and is now Google certified. And so that was a really big deal for him as well. This last week, last Friday, we were at Cross Country State. Our boys and girls both did great. It was a little chilly out there, but that was a lot of fun. We, you saw Debbie tonight on the super grants. And I just, from the superintendent, want to say publicly how exciting it is to have that much money coming back into our schools. And it was a really different approach where they're impacting something that we would have difficulty doing inside the budget. And the Makerspace at Middle School will be the first that we know of in Northern Virginia. We're very excited about that. And then the other concept that she was talking about with Peter Mecca's project is just such a coordination between Richard Kane, our special education department, and our science department. I wasn't sure if you actually got that connection, but growing the food and selling it back to our actual food service program for all the fresh fruits, fresh vegetables. So that's going to be really exciting. And also, I would have to plug that our elementary PTA just gave away $20,000 in grants as well. And that's huge from our elementary PTA. And then Phantom of the Opera, just don't forget to go out and see it. And we're encouraging people to try and attend on Thursday. We do expect big crowds. And due to the fire marshal, there is a cutoff point where you can't get in the door if we don't have the seats. So try to come on Thursday if you want to help the high school. They're concerned they're not going to have enough seats. Okay.
Thank you very much. It's now time for board comments. Ms. Board, do you have comments this evening? All right, thank you. Mr. Ankuma, do you have comments this evening?
No, none from me at this time.
All right.
Unfortunately, we are missing my, or our daycare advisory board meeting tomorrow.
All right. Mr. Castillo, do you have comments this evening?
Yes, I will echo the superintendent's shout-out for Phantom of the Opera.
Special interest in that?
I personally shaved the head of the Phantom on Sunday. That's the level of devotion to the craft that he's showing, so.
Can we be clear? You're related to him.
Yes, yes. I don't do that for just anyone. I would congratulate the Lawrences again on a job well done on the bond referendum. John and Lawrence Webb did a great job. I think that's something we should not soon forget. Was at the ESOL Advisory Committee meeting last week. We had a good meeting. We have some good dialogue going on. Been talking with the chairs. There's a lot to do, and I think there's a lot we are doing. So I think as we go through the year, I'll be able to keep you all apprised of how things are unfolding, but I have a good feeling about that. And that's all for now.
All right. Thanks very much. Mr. Sharp?
I was fortunate to get in touch with Ms. Ashaheed about a competition that I attended last spring with John Pepper, who at that time was our dean of students. It's a competition for middle schoolers in science, technology. It's called NOVA Outside, and it's held at George Mason University in the spring. There were a lot of local schools who were participating last spring. And I did pass along information to Ms. Ashaheed, and she in turn to the teacher who is sponsoring the environmental club, Ms. Malerick. And so I'm pretty confident that they're going to be entering a team. I know they're in preparation for it, for this coming spring competition period. And I know, according to the teacher, that students were very excited to be in that preparation. And I expect they'll follow through. But the actual registration, I understand, is in January, and there may be a large crowd to try to get placed among that crowd. I also attended a conference here at the Hilton Garden Inn that Dominion Hospital sponsored. And they brought in a speaker from the Jason Foundation, which is a national organization that is engaged in suicide prevention. They had a number of speakers that day, including the chair of the Board of Supervisors in Fairfax, Sharon Boliva, and the local district supervisor from the Mason District, Penny Gross. Both of them spoke about incidents in their experience where there was a young person who had committed suicide, and they became aware of it, and had to help the families involved, the professionals who were involved. And the director of the Jason Foundation also spoke at length. And there's going to be a partnership, that's already begun, is my understanding, between the Jason Foundation and Dominion Hospital to offer programs to local schools and other organizations at no cost. Apparently Dominion Hospital and the Jason Foundation are absorbing all of the costs for those offerings. On December 3rd, there'll be another mentor training for the Fairfax Partnership for Youth. It's actually training for any program in the area that has a need for developing new people to go into a mentoring relationship with youngsters. We have two of those mentoring programs here in the city. One meets at the Community Center on Thursdays, and the other one's connected with the Court Services Unit. But there are many others throughout the area that this mentor training can support. So that's in the evening on December 3rd, if anyone would like to participate. You'd go on the Partnership for Youth's website, which is FairfaxYouth.org. And there's a link there to register. The Homestretch Program, which originated here in Falls Church and continues to operate here on Maple Avenue, was recognized by the Washington Post as one of just three organizations among about 80 in the Washington area that applied to be so recognized. And you'll see in today's edition of the Post, John Kelly's Washington describes some of what Homestretch does and their needs that they have, particularly around the holiday season. They are a transitional housing program for the homeless. And they work with homeless families that have children in our schools and children in the schools in Fairfax and Arlington. I was pleased to be present at the evening when student representatives were initiated by the city council, sworn in by the city clerk for advisory groups with the city. And there are about 18 of those. We also had some who volunteered to be participants in advisory groups for the school board. So we have, after just having a single board representative to the school board, it's now blossomed into more than two dozen student representatives and influencing the entire city. And as I've said to some of the students who volunteered to participate, I think the, all of the committees of adults will behave much better with teenage supervision. We'll see. And I also want to thank all those who helped out with the election. John and Lawrence, everyone, I think, up here on the dais was a participant in their, his or her personal capacity in support of the referendum. It was a very, very nice margin of victory for the referendum. I think really much better than I had anticipated it would be in the aftermath of the recession, in the, just the climate of the city that we've been experiencing the last few years, the really tight budget atmosphere. All of those components, I think, would suggest that this was going to be a very difficult thing to get past. And I think, I think in general, it was difficult. It was something that people had to really work on to get it through. And I know that they did. And I know that they did, from, you know, individuals who spearheaded the campaign to people who ran forums at various places in the city, especially the American Legion, and the PTAs and the Education Foundation and others who took some risk in trying to present a position that maybe some of their members had questions about. And yet they were willing to take the risk that this was an important thing for our, for our city to do. I will point out that this bond referendum is one that's really different from when our city first began. I was privileged to receive a description of some of the events that were taking place at the point where the town was becoming the city in the late 1940s. And the charter that the town had for passing a bond referendum required the landowners in the city to vote 50% in favor of bond issue, not the residents, the landowners. Fortunately, that, that's been changed so that it now is the residents who vote. But it's a, it just shows how, in some ways, how very far we've come from a kind of an agrarian type of situation to a more urban style. And we now will have a three-story elementary school, even at the lowest grade, which perhaps is more of an urban, urban atmosphere than, than we've been used to, perhaps. I will say about the draft CIP that we've seen tonight, I congratulate those who have been pushing this forward, trying to make this as quick a process as possible. You'll, I think, see in the video that the ULI advisors provided a recommendation that the building of school would start in five years from now. And the whole project in the GM, MEH area would take 10 years to complete. Well, I'm glad to see that the superintendent thought we should speed up a little more than that, get underway, and get the building occupied before 2020. And I think that's, that's very appropriate. I'd like to see an even faster timeline if we can do it. And I think it's, I think it's an appropriate thing to look for. My sense is that there really is no adverse effect from building the school in relation to the economic development that's expected. And I think, you know, to some extent, ULI confirmed that by saying, it's probably best for the school building to go first, and then the commercial activity would be completed later. And yet, even if it were done that way, they projected that 60 to 80% of the cost of the building would be supported by the commercial development just on that site, not on, not on sites nearby, or the rest of the property values that would increase, hopefully, in the city, in other areas, but just by the commercial component that would be added to that site. That's, that's pretty, pretty exciting. I think a pretty positive assessment of what this project can be, and that it will not, will not excessively burden the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Lawrence, do you have anything to report this evening?
Yes. I'll try to be quick, but probably will fail. I just want to start with the referendum and thank everybody up here for helping out. I mean, everybody gave time, creativity, money, shoe leather. And it was, I think, a great victory for the, for the city. Zach, our student liaison who couldn't be here tonight, he roped in other civic-minded students, and they spent the last weekend and the Monday, because it was a professional day, and they were off walking and hitting doors with leaflets and making sure that they did, you know, everything they could. And he sent me a note and apologized. He said, we didn't get to some streets because it got too dark. So, you know, that showed just how long they were out there. And we are moving. Tony said we met with the Mount Daniel ASAP for the first time, well, not for the first time, but for the first time since the referendum today. And, you know, things are moving along. So it was, it was, it was a great vote. So thank you to everybody, and I'm glad I could help out. The elementary PTA, it's funny, somebody mentioned they're doing 20,000 in grants. They're also inspired by the foundation. They're trying to see if they can do their own super grants by looking at either by school, by grade. I mean, they're really looking at, rather than doing a bunch of one-offs, if they can pull stuff together and really do something significant, they're going to. So they're, they're really working on that. I was at the Gifted and Talented Committee last night, and I reminded them that in our three-year plan, we said that we wanted their advice on incorporating and identifying visual and performing arts, as well as career and technical education. And they did VPA last year, and they're going to get working on how to identify CTE. And they admitted that, you know, in the early years, it might be very, very difficult. I mean, you say a kindergarten is, you know, doing Legos at a fourth grade level, but, you know, higher up, it might be possible. But they are, they got reminded, and they're going to work on that. Other than that, we had the, we had the GM Steering Committee, the first one since the ULI tap. And I think things are moving along well. We're going to get their reports at the end of the year, hopefully sometime in December. Other than that, when Zach is here next time, he'll explain the process for the student liaisons. He set up a very good process for getting us this student liaisons. They had to fill out, you know, extensive information, explain why they wanted to be on it. And he asked me to be involved in reviewing the, all the applications. They were all blind reviews, so I had no idea who they were. But, you know, next time he'll speak, because we do suddenly have a whole lot of students advising the entire city, which is, which is really wonderful. And other than that, I apologize, my wife's travel plans changed. I was going to go to VSBA this week, but I cannot. So please say hi to a three-hour trip to Williamsburg, and I won't miss that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. First, the special ed advisory committee kicked off the new year with their first meeting. It's a great group. We have lots of new folks, and so a lot of new ideas, I think, and new perspectives. They're doing two major pieces of work that they've started so far, projects for this year. One is reviewing their bylaws and the way they're going to operate. And then the second is they've created a subcommittee to take up the important topic of communication with the parent community, to make sure that parents get as much information as they can, as easily as they can, from their peers who are other parents. So I think that's really promising, and I thank them, and I thank Liz Germer for her hard work on that. Those subcommittees are going to take a little more of her time than she expected, but she's cheerfully and happily doing that. The George Mason Steering Committee is taking a couple weeks off. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, December 4th, at 7:30 downstairs in this building. Please join us if you'd like. We're looking at next steps to complete the planning process to, and the community visioning part of that project. So it was pretty exciting stuff, in my opinion. Yesterday, I attended a meeting of Northern Virginia Community College Board, and I just wanted to bring a couple of interesting things back to this particular board. First, this was held at the Manassas Campus, which is focused to a large degree on biotechnology and engineering. And so we had six or seven different student groups present work and projects that they're doing in these areas, and it was just fascinating and incredible. It's just like when I go on our schools, I can't believe what the kids are doing. We had a couple of engineering students who demonstrated how they're using 3D printing to design and build drones and test them. Pretty cool. We went to the biotechnology lab and had a look at what they're doing to identify the things that hang around in your body that you don't want to know about that are good for you, even though you may not think so, and a bunch of other things. That was really neat. The second thing I wanted to let you know is that the community college is, as are all community colleges in Virginia over the last several years, experiencing a little bit of a dip in enrollment, about 2%. At Northern Virginia Community College, it's about four statewide, so it's still doing well, but that's a little bit, a little bit different. Things that are being emphasized by the community college, in addition to the STEM initiatives and the healthcare initiatives, one is dual enrollment. And they're looking to expand dual enrollment opportunities across all of the school divisions that are a part of Northern Virginia's area here. And so from our perspective as a board, that's just great, great news. They're looking for innovative ways to get kids into that program without having to hike them off to campuses. And so I think we'll be tracking that, and I know Dr. Jones is engaged in it. The second is the Pathways to Baccalaureate Program, which was started in Northern Virginia Community College a number of years ago. For those who don't know about it, we identify kids in high school who are in underrepresented populations, many of them first-time collegegoers, if they can get there. And they are supported and mentored in this very specific program through high school, through two years at Northern Virginia Community College to get an associate's degree, and then to George Mason University. It's an amazing program. It's received accolades all over the nation. And a couple of things I wanted to tell you about that. First, there are now literally thousands of students in this pipeline, thousands. This isn't like a few, or dozens, or even hundreds, but thousands of them. More kids from that program go to George Mason University each year as third-year transfers than the freshman class at George Mason University each year. So it's a huge success, just making a difference for so many kids. And the graduation rate for those kids is higher than the average graduation rate at George Mason University. So it's just a, it's a great program for those kids, and I'm proud that our school division is a part of it. Really very cool. And that's what I have to share tonight. The last thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have minutes from October 14, 21, and 28. Unless there are objections from members of the board, I'm just simply going to ask for unanimous consent for these meetings. Seeing none, that is so ordered, so we have approved those minutes. There are some materials for board review, if you want to take a look at those. And unless there's anything else, we'll adjourn for the evening. All right. Thanks, everybody. We are adjourned. Good night.